All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 26, 2022 Winchester Select Board Meeting. I'm Rich Mucci, Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Mariana Guleboff, Michael Bettencourt, and John Fallon, and Assistant Town Manager Beth Rudolph. Thanks, everyone, for being here. kicking off Friday with, you know, Street Festival with all our high school teams selling merchandise. I updated all my gear, then watched field hockey with an impressive 1-0 win against LS, which was really nice. And Saturday, we had a couple of events. The Chamber put on with the fireworks, beer garden, and then obviously the race yesterday. But none of it would be possible if it wasn't for our great DPW staff that, you know, you know, silently went about their business all weekend, you know, supporting all those events. Our fire and police departments as well with their details and providing safety all weekend long. It was a great effort by our municipal department. So, thank you to all of them. Much appreciated. I think the community had a lot of fun. No matter what events you went to, it seemed like everyone was having a great time. So, thanks again to, to our chiefs and Jay Gill for making all that happy and their staffs as well. We're going to start in a little different order tonight. I'm going to ask Pat to come on up with Kirsten, Anne, and Chris as well. Come on in. Have a seat. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Appreciate it. Pat, I'll turn it over to you to introduce everyone.
Kirsten May, Chris Centarelli, Anne McCaffey. Anne McCaffey's a treasurer. Chris is going to be the next president. Kirsten was the president before I was. We're all still on the board trying to help out any way we can. I just wanted to say thank you. I know with the funds that were available to the town for different projects, you guys had a lot to choose from, I'm sure. And as far as the Sports Foundation is concerned, we appreciate the fact that the kids are going to get something that's also part of that. I'm sure they would have gotten other things elsewhere, but still having 70% of high school students play a sport. And 2/3 of that play on this field. So, the big thing was when we first put the field in, it was so expensive, we did try to keep costs down. Some of the, you know, the shot pad, things that weren't really available the first time are now going to be added to this field. So, it is for a huge upgrade for safety for all of these kids as well. I've seen the plan for it. The numbers are already programmed in, so they, when they literally lay out the field, there's no painting. So, that alone will save money on, you know, continuing maintenance of the field. So, I really, we do really appreciate it. We felt it was important for the kids to get a new field. So, we felt it was important for us to put our, you know, means together and donate this check for, just to make this project happen. And we really do appreciate it. I know, like I said, you guys had some tough choices, and it's not easy. You have, you know, everyone coming at you at different ends. So, we really do appreciate it because we think it's worthwhile for the kids. So, that's all.
Thank you very much to the Sports Foundation for this generous donation. It made the project possible. You know, it helped, you know, defray the costs. So, certainly, we're excited to do it. Excited to see it happen. I think it's starting in a few weeks. Is that?
October 15th.
October 15th.
Yeah.
And should be ready for Thanksgiving game, hopefully. Maybe, fingers crossed. We have some good weather, which will be fantastic. So, I agree. Someone who coaches many sports on that field, it was long overdue, so it's certainly going to help. And, you know, will be a great addition for everyone. Maybe we can revive the old Turkey Bowl as well, you know, so us adults can get out there and play some flag football as well. So...
Well, I do think also the naming that's going to be on the school side. I do really, that was important. I brought that up because I felt like it can alleviate some concerns in trying to, you know, get kids away from homes and such like that. So, I really do think that that is more important, you know, just as important as, as the turf itself. So, thank you guys very much. So...
I know, definitely. And I think we're replacing the fencing as well. So, you know, a little new look over there for Thanksgiving. So, if you're in the area for Thanksgiving, hopefully the field will be open.
I'm not sure the fencing we've done for Thanksgiving, but, yeah, the field hopefully will be.
Start. Great. Want to grab a picture with everyone?
Sure.
Can you guess all or do we need to squeeze?
Okay, you're the set. Exactly.
I know. I make a better door than a window. I get that. I've been told that a couple of times.
Get a little bit closer in. Do a wide angle, then we can... Why is it? Okay. Sorry. It's wanting to portrait and it's biting me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Let's jump back up to... I think we already, we already accepted it. That was just a ceremonial acceptance. We voted it...
When I was in here, yeah.
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 That's about a week ago. So, let's go back up and accept other donations.
Move we accept a donation of $250 from Fan Family Action Network to the Recreation Department for the 2022 Summer Concerts on the Common.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move we accept with gratitude and in-kind donation from the Friends of Winchester Recreation of a Gaga Pit and Rubber Floor Kit to replace the current Gaga Pit at the Mystic School Playground to the Recreation Department.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move we accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Invisible Collective to Winchester's Downtown Beautification Project.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for those kind donations as well. Next, we will go to our Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So, first up, I have an appointment in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the Rules and Regulations of the Department of Personal Administration, Civil Service. And as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I have made the following permanent full-time appointment in the Fire Department, Department of Eric Scourtass of Nahont for firefighter slash paramedic. And I respectfully requested the Board waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Move that the Board waive the 15-day waiting period for the appointment of Evan Scourtass to the Fire Department for firefighter/paramedic.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Great. Thank you. So, a few other updates on items that aren't on the agenda this evening. We had a meeting last week, I believe it was, with several representatives from the School Committee, the EFPBC, and from the Lynch School Sustainability Subcommittee, just to talk about where things stand with the projects. There were four goals that were identified during the meeting. First was to evaluate the feasibility of geothermal at the site. So, that work is currently underway with the architect and the Sustainability Subcommittee to hire a solar consultant to evaluate options for the site and the building. That work, that, my understanding is that the EFPBC and their consultant, their architect are moving forward with getting somebody under contract to do that work. The next item was to apply to EverSource's EV Make Ready program, which the town is taking the lead on. And the last piece was to develop an energy model for the building, which my understanding is that that's currently underway and is scheduled for mid to late October. So, I think we're all happy to see that there's an effort being made by the EFPBC and the Sustainability Subcommittee to make this building as green as we can and to hopefully obtain the goal of reaching our net zero, net zero at that site. So, hopefully, over the next month or so, we'll have some additional updates provided to the Board on that. Next up, I just wanted to mention that our Town Council, our new Town Council from Mead, Talamin, and Costa are now holding office hours on the first and third Thursday of each month. We had originally planned it to be from 9:00 a.m. to noon. I think we're going to shift it an hour later, starting at 10:00 a.m. The office hours are not open to the public. They're just open to staff and Board and committee members. And anybody who's interested from a Board or committee or staff should reach out to Patty the Wednesday before the meeting to schedule a time.
So, Beth, so that's going to be, if you're on a committee, you, nope, we can't circumvent that. I mean, that, they can't, like, can they call the attorney outside of those hours and just ask questions or do they go through you?
Sure, yeah. So, so, the Town Manager's Office is always, is always the gatekeeper. Typically, Department Heads and Boards and Committees come through us if they have concerns. Obviously, it's, it's an ongoing dialogue. They don't, we need to be, you know, included in everything. But this is just gives people an opportunity. We had a meeting last week, actually, with Sally from the Planning Board and other members just to talk in person about a couple of issues. So, I think it's a, it's nice to be able to have that opportunity for, for people. Any other questions on that?
Can we just back up a question? I have a question about the police and the fire.
Sure.
Are they fully staffed? Getting close to being fully staffed?
So, I think they've made some gains in terms of being fully staffed, but there have been some retirements that have kind of shifted the pendulum back to being understaffed. So, it's a, it's a constant...
So, just from my own application, is it five positions in the police and two in the fire or, you know?
Yeah.
What's the magnitude?
Right. I don't know. It's off my head, but I can find out. Yep.
I understand. It changes all the time. We lose people. Just...
Yep.
Get to them.
Sure.
You know, Lynch, when, will we have a sense of what that, put the traffic aside, improvements, what that project's going to cost? You know, are we 75% of the way there? 80% of the way there? What's?
I think we're, we're pretty close to having a number at this point. And I don't want to speak for the EFPBC, but they're, they're narrowing that pretty quickly right now. So...
They put some numbers out on the website as well. So, yeah, so I think it's...
Yeah, they update that.
I'll let you spill the beans rather than me. So...
What'd you say?
I'll let you spill the beans rather than me. So...
I'll defer people to the website at this point and let them. I know there's, there was stuff that came in today that they're still just working through, but they're close on a number.
Okay.
And we just found the, found out the reimbursement rate today. So, it's just over 36%.
Thank you.
Sure. Just a couple other quick construction updates. There's going to be paving starting around town, starting on Wednesday. So, you can expect some delays and rough roads as a result of that. Other construction updates, the EverSource 345 KB project is ongoing. We hope that they'll be off of Washington Street by the end of this week or next week. And they will be doing the directional drill under the Aboriginal River at Washington Street later this month. So, that's across from the 620 Washington Street Hospital Facility. They will be continuing work on Cross Street through the remainder of the fall season. Work is also ongoing on Bacon Street as part of the EverSource 115 KV Project. They are currently doing their directional drill under the Aboriginal River there. And there should, there will be some limited impact to driveway accessibility next week while they do pull that pipe through.
Do all the neighbors know?
We're working on that, yeah. So, they've, EverSource has been in contact with the neighbors. There's a meeting tomorrow just to kind of nail down the final impacts, and we'll have some more information out to that neighborhood later this week. We started work last week on the Main Street Bridge railing repair. So, as you can see, we have, we'll be working on one side of the bridge and then the other. All told, I think it'll be about two months' worth of work, one month on either side, hoping, hoping that'll goes a little quicker. But they were able to remove the caps on the railing last week, and we'll be restoring, restoring that area over the next month. Morocco School Roof Repairs. That work is expected to start the first week of October, and there's some masonry work that's starting right now. North Reservoir, dam construction is underway, and the transfer station construction is underway. We'll be, we'll have Weston Sampson here next week to update us on both of those projects. Who's the engineer? Upcoming construction, just mentioned the Manchester Turf replacement that hopefully will be starting around October 15th, and then also expecting to start work on the Mystic Sports Court project this fall. Hoping to get the paving work done, and then we'll do the final court layout and painting in the spring. And then I just wanted to mention a few other community events. So, our Sustainability Director, Ken Pruitt, has done an excellent job of putting together a real great lineup of activities this week for Climate Solutions Week. So, I encourage everybody to take, take a look at the events that are posted up on the town's website. I know several of us will be at a meeting on Thursday night at the Jink Center. So, it's a great opportunity to learn more about sustainability initiatives in Winchester. Wincam is holding an open house at their studio at 32 Swan Street from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, September 29th. And they have a variety of events scheduled for that evening for anybody who's interested. And then also on October 12th at 7:00 p.m., there's a presentation from Corey Mashburn about healthy relationships for today's adults and today's youth, and you can sign up on the town's website. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth? All right. So, like Beth said, we'll have Weston Sampson here for a couple of updates on those two projects. We'll have the MBTA here at some point, I think, in October on their project as well. So, getting some construction updates will be helpful as we head towards what tends to be a busy holiday season downtown and around town. So, thank you for that. We're going to move on in our agenda to public comment. If anyone's here for public comment, I will recognize you for three minutes on any topics that we have on our agenda. Just come forward, introduce yourself, and you can go from there. Who's first? Rich?
I have some handouts, Mr. Chairman, at the top right hand.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to address the Board. And just for the record, my name is Richard Rohan. I'm a resident of the town. I live at 152 Swanton Street. I've served over 20 years as a Town Meeting Representative to the Second Precinct and for the past several years as Precinct Captain for that caucus. For 12 years, I was a Commissioner of the Winchester Housing Authority. And as such, I was a representative from the Authority to the Housing Production Plan Working Group, working with Mariano and Michael on that. And currently, I'm serving as on the Transfer Station Working Group and also a member and waiting on the Master Plant Implementation Committee, the so-called NPIT, PIC. 16 years, but the reason I'm here tonight is 16 years ago, I was a member of a citizens group that petitioned the then 2006 Fall Town Meeting to place the Community Preservation Act, otherwise known as the CPA, on the March 2007 ballot. And as you know, unfortunately, that ballot question at that time failed to pass. But since that time, Winchester has missed an opportunity to gain hundreds of thousands of dollars in state matching funds from that CPA trust fund that the state maintains and which Winchester residents pay into through their fees and filing fees at the registry. I mean, every time a Winchester resident goes to the registry to file his ZVA conditions, the fee that they pay for that goes into the CPA trust fund, none of which comes to Winchester right now because we have not adopted the CPA. Which is reason why earlier today, I submitted to the Town Manager's Office a petition, which signed by about a half a dozen, I'm sorry, about a dozen other Town Meeting Representatives requesting that the CPA be included in the 2024 Fall Town War, Town, I'm sorry, the, um, this, this Fall's Town Meeting War, so 2022. In anticipation of further discussions, I prepared the handouts that I have there, that I've circulated for you. That has additional information on the CPA and also handout the, that shows the experience of Winchester's municipal benchmarking communities. So, I went back and looked at in 2006, over the 20 communities that Winchester benchmarked itself against and what has, how have they fared with the CPA? Whether they've, whether they've passed it or not, and if they have passed it, how much local funds have they, have they collected, and how much state matching funds have they collected over? And those numbers, those, you see them are cumulative totals. So, that's it. So, once again, I want to thank the Board for your time and attention. And we look forward to, our group looks forward to further discussions with this Board and with other registered boards. Going forward with the CPA and hope, hopefully successfully this time. Thank you.
So, while you're here, yeah, can I just ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, do you, is there like a, I mean, this is a pretty, pretty heavy lift.
I understand.
I mean, this is something we explored as a Board doing. I think there's a consensus among us to do this. You know, we have members meet with the Community Preservation Committee that really set out... that really set out a timeline for the town to do this strategically, you know? And I think what the consensus was to do, you know, was a, you know, they showed, you know, the success of the municipal election versus a gubernatorial race versus a presidential race. And I think, you know, having our members report back to us on that, you know, kind of sway this board to, 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 you know, essentially hit the brakes on it for this Fall Town Meeting and kind of strategically think of this. Because, you know, what was also expressed was, you know, you really get one bite at the apple on this, that the statistics are, you know, that it, you know, it's tough. It's something that you need to build a consensus on. You need to have a campaign. You need to educate the public on it. So do you, are you organized? Do you have, you know, are you, are you guys going to build a campaign to this? Because I think this is something that, you know, several of us would support. But, you know, the timing isn't.
No, I'm fully, I fully anticipate building a campaign from the, the members that I've talked to already, as they said. In terms of election success, I mean, just looking at the chart here of our, of our benchmark communities, Sharon, for instance, it took them three times to pass it. Canton, same, took it three times, took them a few times to pass it. There are some communities like Wakefield that voted twice on it early on, failed both times, and they've never gone back to it. Marblehead, same thing, the deal. So, no, I realize it's going to be a tough sell to the public. And I don't necessarily long education process. And I think.
Yeah, I think.
I'm going to take that on. I know that some other members and people that were, have signed on to the petition would be willing to help in that endeavor.
Yeah, I just think it's a short runway. You know, here we are.
I understand.
End of September for town meeting.
Forty, I know it's, the warrant closes today. It's forty, what, forty-four days, forty-five days to, to town meeting and, but.
Go ahead. You have something?
Yeah, just wanted to comment. Thanks, Rich. I know that you've been pushing this for a while and the board has committed, you know, to a timeline, as Rich said, of putting this forward, the Spring Town Meeting, two thousand and twenty-four. And as you know, you have to, once you bring it to town meeting, the next election is where it has to be held. So.
I understand.
We, we were told by the Community Preservation Committee, who provided us, right, with a lot of data. I mean, I, I think if anybody agrees on anything around these tables, I'm horribly impatient. So for me to wait that long for something that's so important, the, the data really, I think, supported it to us. So, but bringing it to a, a local municipal election was, was the worst time to bring it. So I think that, you know, that your heart certainly is in the right place and your commitment. I think, you know, I would, I would encourage the group to work with us as we establish a campaign. What we've been hearing and what the Communications Committee was established to do for us is to talk about how we communicate better and more broadly with the, with our constituency and with town meeting members. Our focus right now, a hundred percent, is the Lynch School. So we need to deliver that building. And we have a timeline between now and town meeting and then a short runway again to January for an election. So we're, our, our focus is, is really there. So we've got future operating override. We have a lot of, you know, a lot of things that are in the queue. So I would, you know, encourage you to, you know, speak with the chair and the town manager's office and see if we can work together. Because I, I think that there is probably nothing more important than this town passing the CPA and it being successful. And I think going back and, you know, over and over again is not helpful for us. It's not the best strategy. So, but, but, you know, thank you again. And we're certainly willing to, to work with anyone, put together a, a longer term campaign, you know, along the, the timeline that the Community Preservation Committee had, had kind of outlined for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
So thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to speak. My name is Sally Dale and I'm a precinct seven town meeting member and I live at one forty-seven Cambridge Street. And I'm speaking to you today as a resident and a voter and a taxpayer and a town meeting member. I'm not speaking on behalf of our planning board, which, as you know, I'm a member of. These are my views as a Winchester resident and town meeting member. And I support the citizens petition to ask our Fall Town Meeting members this November, the question of whether to ask the town voters in next spring's town election, municipal election, to enact the Community Preservation Act in Winchester. There are a hundred and fifty-five towns and thirty-four cities in Massachusetts that have done so since the act was put in place twenty-two years ago. And since two thousand and twenty, eight hundred and fourteen million dollars has been given to CPA communities for projects for the four categories that you're probably all familiar with, open space protection, historic preservation, affordable housing, and outdoor recreation. And by not being a CPA community for these past two decades, and I realize that we haven't considered it until more recently, we have left a lot of money on the table, the town has, paying for all our capital needs with other sources like borrowing and taxes. And given what I understand to be a huge backlog of unfunded capital projects, and it seems to grow each year, I'm, I'm not as much of a student of our capital planning committee's work as I would like to be, but I do think that we do need to take advantage of as many of the state funding programs as we possibly can. And I see the CPA as part of sort of a, of a ecology of funding opportunities for the town, which includes a lot of different sources. We know what we need to do to access state housing funds. And we know what we need to do to access mass works, infrastructure money. And we know what we need to do to access the Community Preservation Trust Fund in Massachusetts. And the trust fund matches money raised from our taxpayers and held, as you know, in a designated Winchester account. And six, since two thousand and eight, the match percentage has been, has ranged from a low of seventeen percent to a high of over sixty-seven percent. And in two thousand and twenty-one, which is the last match year, it was forty-three point eight percent match. So I understand completely the discussion and the conversation about the timing of this funding request to our taxpayers in alignment with all the other funding requests that are in the plan between now and, well, at least two thousand and twenty-four, if not beyond. And I think that it's fiscally prudent of us to put this in the mix and put this in the conversation. I think that not doing so for yet another year is an unfortunate thing for us to do. And the fact that we do have a municipal election and that the turnout for municipal elections is very often our most informed citizens, residents, voters. And given that we do all have a new community commitment to communicating better, at the risk of sounding like an infomercial, I want to say that I think if we act now, we can start receiving CPA trust fund money as early, in fact, I know if we act now, we can start receiving that trust fund money as early as November of two thousand and twenty-four. And that is not as far away as many people, I don't think you're included in this, think it is. It's coming right up. So I thank you for listening. And I'm in support of the previous speaker's efforts to get it on the Fall Warrant. So that's what I have.
Thanks, Sally.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a comment? So I just want to thank Rich and Sally and the other ten or twelve people who signed the petition. The charter gives residents the ability to put things on the warrant when other boards don't. And thank you for taking the initiative to do that. I know there's been a lot of conversation about an override for capital because capital doesn't have money. And I can't see a better way that if we're going to raise money for capital, to raise money for capital, that also gets matching funds versus raising money for capital that doesn't get matching funds. So I think this is a good idea. And thank you to you and the others who signed that to, to put it on the town meeting warrant.
Okay. I mean, I don't think anybody thinks it's a bad idea. I think it's just, you know, strategically, what is the best, best way to do it? And, you know, my understanding, and I wasn't in the room, but hearing reports back from our, our members, was that, you know, essentially this, this state organization that, you know, assists towns, you know, have a positive result, positive vote, basically, you know, talked us out of, you know, putting it on in the fall. So, I mean, that's just the issue. You know, where I said today, you know, hearing at four o'clock, this came in, you know, on the day the warrant closes, you know, frankly, to me, it's a little disappointing because it's such a big issue and something that's so important to this town, as everyone's pointed out. It'd be, you know, we have missed out on tens, thousands, millions of dollars over time. It's just, you know, something that's just, it's going to take a lot of work to get done. And the question, you know, and listening to these people that, you know, solely do this type of work, you know, this wasn't the right time for our town. So we'll see what happens. But, you know, I hope it passes.
I, I understand your comments, but the charter allows residents to, to take this. And I think when we tell the voters that we can either have the taxpayers pay for a hundred percent of capital improvements or pay for eighty-five percent of capital improvements, they'll choose to pay for eighty-five percent of capital improvements instead of a hundred percent. I think it's a short runway, but I think that we can, it's, it's something that makes a lot of sense to have. So.
So I think we also have to be clear about, you know, what the CPA does and doesn't do. So we have a long backlog of capital expenses that wouldn't be reimbursable, you know, that we couldn't apply, right, for this, this funds.
Sure. But there are a lot that are.
Let me just finish. Certainly, there are a lot that there are. Affordable housing is a major priority. I think that's why, you know, our chair made the CPA a priority for us and was a little bit disappointed when, you know, we came back saying it doesn't look like it's in the cards for this, this time. So, you know, it's, again, not just state matching and not just state grants. I mean, we're asking taxpayers to tax themselves at a higher rate, right? And we're doing that with Lynch. We're doing that with an upcoming operating override. The Lynch project is, you know, going to be seventy-five million dollars, right? We haven't talked about that. So I think the reimbursement from the state is only seventeen million dollars, right? So we're going to carry a lot of that. We're asking taxpayers to do that. And I think we've got to be, have a real public conversation when we're, we're asking taxpayers to, to increase their taxes on themselves. And so I hope we can do that. Again, it's, it's going to be a really, a really short runway. So I, I hope it's successful. And I hope that we get the, the percentage that, that we're looking for, if it is. So.
It, it just seems that we should probably start thinking about reaching back out to CVC and coordinating with them. And this is going to be on the ballot for town meeting. Then we'll need to figure out how they can support the messaging and, and the process of that. Because I think collectively, we, you know, supported this with the idea that we could plan for two thousand and twenty-four and have some strategic messaging and strategic planning and have a, you know, be going towards something where there's a, a pretty high success rate in a presidential election versus in a smaller municipal election. And, you know, being able to tap into their resources and, and their understanding of messaging and, and how to coordinate would be really important.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. Do you want to reach out to them? And tell them what's happened? See if there's any, if they can lend? Anyone else for town meeting? Oh, excuse me, town meeting, for public comment? All right. Hearing nobody, we'll close public comment. We do have a public hearing. I did want to get to George from George's Auto Detailing. Why don't you come on up, sir? I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman.
And you're here to apply for a class two motor vehicle license.
That's correct.
At seven forty-three R Main Street. So Beth, I don't know if you want to start?
Yeah. So the town manager's office has reviewed the application. Everything seems to be in order from our, our perspective.
Great. Any questions for George? This seems like a pretty straightforward request. Any board members have questions? Hearing none, I'd ask if anyone in the public is here to comment on this public hearing? Come on up.
I have dealt with.
Do we?
Jean McCarthy, sorry.
Yep.
Second time up. I have dealt with George for the last three years, I'd say, with his, George's detailing. He does a wonderful job. He runs a wonderful business. Most of our family members have been, had their cars done with George. And I know he's a very successful businessman.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Feel free. George, say your role.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the application from George Alwell, doing business as George's Auto Detailing and Auto Sales for a class two motor vehicle license to be located at seven forty-three R Main Street.
Seven thirty-four. The, sorry, the application says seven thirty-four. And the, seven forty-three or seven?
It's seven thirty-four.
Yeah.
I got it before it changed. I put it on a long time ago. So it is correct on the application.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Here you go. Congratulations, George. Good luck with everything.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Next, I'll bring up, why don't we bring up Erica from Tool? Talk about Lynch School Traffic Calming Measures.
So I'll just kick it off briefly while Erica's getting set up.
Sure, go ahead, Beth.
So the town received funding at Spring Town Meeting to complete a traffic study to evaluate traffic calming and pedestrian and bike improvements in the area around Lynch School. So Tool, Erica, from Tools here this evening to review the draft concept plans and the planning level cost estimates that we've developed. This is the extent of what that initial funding we got off of town meeting will get us. So the next phase is to look towards getting design and construction money. And we're not looking for any sort of final action from the board this evening, just some general feedback on the scope. We're expecting to meet with T-TAC hopefully later this month and then probably have a series of outreach meetings to the neighborhood and to the Lynch School community to get some more feedback. Working out the logistics of how we'll move forward with the funding of this, staff needs to have some additional conversations with MSBA and our bond council over the next week to determine the extent to which these proposed improvements can be included in the Lynch article itself at town meeting. So we'll, we'll do some, a little bit more work and then report back to the board next week. And then we can talk more about the Fall, how we're going to, how we'll approach it at Fall Town Meeting when we get to the warrant article. So with that, I'll turn it over to Erica.
So Erica.
Yeah.
Can you give us a little before and after? Because I'm like, June and I, everybody, more importantly, I like the overview. I'm like, okay, so what's the before and the after? Because I'm like, what is really changing? Maybe there's a lot changing. I just couldn't tell from the slides.
Before and after?
Now.
For the, the street network?
For the, for the, what's happening with, what we're going to present, you know, what are the major changes are?
I hope that I can get to that by describing the slides that I've shared with you.
Do you want to have some kind of kickoff slides that might help set some context? Self questions like that?
Okay, I'm trying to send it like the impact on the neighborhood is really what I want to get to.
Okay, I just, and thank you for kicking that off, Beth. So I'm going to jump into this. I actually have a good twenty slides, which is more than I usually have. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Move a little quickly. We think at the end, we can kind of go back if there's any questions or if I missed anything, if you have questions on them. So as Beth mentioned, Tool Design, myself, Erica Guidaboni, was hired to do kind of an assessment of some of the neighborhood streets around the Lynch Elementary School. And I just wanted to, you know, I think everyone in the room knows this, but I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, we are not the consultant working on the onsite stuff. So this is really about the kind of offsite access to, to the school. Some of the goals that we sort of, you know, set as we got started on this project, you know, studying the network around the elementary school, enhancing safety and connectivity for students, really focusing on people, you know, walking and biking to and from school as they're the most vulnerable users on the street. And we've prepared some conceptual design. um design plans in support of some of the safety enhancements. So we have collected a lot of data. Um we have some you know speed data, turning movement counts. Um I did uh kind of interview a teacher there and some of the crossing guards. Um that is all gonna end up in a in a really wonderful report for you all that is currently in review. Um so I'm kind of fast forwarding a little bit to what our findings were. So just be aware that they they are kind of founded in some um you know data and observations that we did. Um just a reminder of the district that feeds the the Lynch Elementary School as we jump in here. Um so some common issues that we saw when we were out there, you know higher vehicle speeds. Um the speed limit is uh twenty-five miles per hour on every every street that we looked at. Um and generally speeds were more closer to like the thirty mile per hour range when we looked. We obviously have some more detailed information than that but that's roughly kind of an overview of what we saw. Um a lot of wide intersection geometry. So sort of like those big kind of corners that make it really easy to drive fast around corners. Um part of those lo- um wide intersection geometry along comes uh long crossing distances. So those crosswalks are pretty long. Um and there's some gaps in the pedestrian network. There's some missing sidewalks, um some curb ramps that are missing. You can see a couple of those in the photo here. Um it just is a curb. There's no ramp. Uh so it's definitely not ADA accessible. I'm not comfortable if you're um you know pushing a stroller or in a wheelchair or you know need to step up. Um there's also a variety of sidewalk materials of some asphalt, some concrete, some missing curb as you can see in the photo there on Sylvester Avenue. Um and some crosswalk markings markings are missing um which you know would would enhance the visibility of some of the crossings in the area. Um just a quick reminder, I think I show this every time I come here for a project here. Um the reason we focus so much on these things is that speed increases the severity of a crash. If someone were to get hit, if they are going faster, they are more likely to have a severe or fatal injury. So just keeping that in mind as we as we jump through is kind of the the backstop of a lot of the um the recommendations that we that we came to. So this is lots to take in. Um we have come up with sort of twelve distinct concept areas to focus on as part of this project. I'm gonna jump into the individual areas and um in a moment. Um you'll find that they're all kind of wrap around the school in all directions. Um these are where we saw you know most kids walking and biking um and where we saw some cut through vehicle traffic, some um you know higher speed turns, things of that nature that sort of brought themselves to the forefront of uh of the concepts here. Um so we've got twelve. I'll try to uh get through these. Um on Pond Street, you'll notice um there's actually four that are fairly similar. Chesterford Road, Norfolk Road I'll start with. Um those are a little bit further away from the school. These are super wide um kind of throats to the intersection um creating really long unnecessarily long crosswalks across those. And we do you know students are walking along Pond Street. Pond Street only has a a full sidewalk on one side of the road. So anyone walking on Pond Street is um on that side of the street.
So Erica, to John's question, can you point out where the existing curb line is?
Sure, yeah. So yeah, where you see where you see like a cartoon, like a color colorized, that's the new curb line. And that will be consistent throughout this whole thing. Um the sort of where it's meeting the aerial is where the curb line is now.
So we're talking a lot about speed here. Um and I know you you aren't doing the uh traffic design for the site. But one of the things that came up was um people waiting to pick up their kids, the traffic stacked and stacked and stacked. And so now we've got initial kids potentially going in our traffic. How does that feed into this model?
Sure. Um well, there's a little bit of that. Um and I think it gets a little bit more to the ones that are closer to the to the school itself. Um and we have a few ideas and I think actually it was um Beth, I think we were talking about potentially meeting with the consultant on the school's uh property side so that these um concepts can marry. So I think that's a great point. I don't know that we're gonna solve all of those offsite. I think it's a little bit more onsite. There's a couple that I'll that I'll note that I think do help with that mixing.
Just makes sense. They have a coordinated effort, that's all.
Absolutely.
But I I just wanna take a step back because big picture, what we've tried to do at all these schools, including the work we did at McCall, is to make it safer for people to feel like they can let their kids walk and bike to school. And so doing these improvements hopefully reduces the number of cars that are I mean not on like a rainy day or like fifteen degrees out but overall hopefully reduces the number of cars that are going to the school every day so that those traffic backups aren't as big as what we see because people feel more comfortable letting their kids walk. So.
And I think that's what we saw at BO as well. We did a lot of um you know access curb work there and people you know if you build it, you know the kid will walk and and people tend to then um drop off their kids if they have to you know at on the perimeter of you know that area. So there's still a safe route to school but it's um not like everybody has to pull up right in front, you know.
Yeah, like at BO, everybody parks in front of Mike's house. Because it is now safe to walk the two blocks, right? Instead of before where everybody had to go around.
Yeah, just park on my lawn. It's there. It's fine.
Thank you for adding that color. Um and I hope I thank you Beth for asking that question. I think I'm so used to looking at things like that. I didn't think of that uh of explaining kind of what you're seeing on the screen. So so thank you for pausing there. Um so similarly, just moving a little closer to the school on Pond Street, the same idea here. I will say uh Pond Street at Woodside Road, we looked at a little bit differently from uh an initial study that we conducted I think maybe five years ago now. Um I think the ideal scenario here is curb extensions. Pet Refuge Island is a um more cost-effective alternative that can shorten a crosswalk. But it's a little more of a rapid implementation thing if you really can't find the funding to do it. Um the curb extensions are more comfortable. It increases the sidewalk space, uh queuing space. There is a good amount of kids uh walking across that crosswalk. And there is a pretty heavy uh left turn off of Pond Street onto Woodside Road. So it's certainly um you know triggered um a project there to shorten that crosswalk. It's also um a fence there that causes some sightline issues. So it's best to have the the more you can pull that stop bar out and tighten that intersection in slow speeds.
Do you know how wide that crossing is now?
Ooh.
I wanna say it's like forty, thirty, forty feet probably.
I was gonna say longer than that. So yeah, yeah, that's probably because of I'm thinking um the width of each lane is about ten or so. And so you probably have maybe might be like sixty.
Yeah, it's it's big.
It's pretty long.
It doesn't feel comfortable when you're crossing it, yeah?
Yeah, you feel very exposed. You kind of get to the middle of it. You feel like you wanna get out of it.
Have to pick up your pace.
Can I ask the just a question? Um I see that it has sort of proposed double yellow center line. Is that missing on that part of the street right now or is that sort of it's shifting in one direction or another?
So yeah, so I think the those nuanced details are still in play. Uh we actually wanted to make these in order to get a cost estimate to you all that is sort of conservative. Um we wanted to make these as big as they are and then they might kind of get peeled back. This actually has the curve extending out onto Pond a little bit, which I think could be a conversation. Um cause it will you know spot narrow the road. Um I'm not sure what the level of comfort is with all that. And if there's if there are people riding bikes on Pond Street, that could cause some issues. But if we did do bump outs into Pond Street, that would um have to shift the center line a little bit. So. Um and then looking at and that that's not a huge cost difference. So I think that's more like you know talking to T-TAC, talking to the school, um talking to residents and getting a sense of what how we wanna shape these. Um moving to uh Brantwood Road, um it's the same idea and uh pulling that sidewalk down um along the north side of uh of Brantwood for access for kids, kind of establishing that parking. I think right now it's just kind of a dirt area.
Um just one thing, you mentioned bikes on Pond Street. Did you look at whether that's safe? I mean it seems like Pond is so narrow that it wouldn't really be safe.
You can't you can't paint official bike lanes on Pond Street. You don't have the space for it though. But if people are riding in the in the shoulder, you know, if you're having a bump out, it can be challenging to go around. So it doesn't it doesn't help bikes to have those in there generally unless you could get them.
Unless it makes it safer for the bike to just go in the middle of the lane, right?
Yeah, which you'd have to you'd have to do some there's some decent volumes on there. So it could be challenging. Um this is uh the other side of the school now. Um Royal Street at Horn Pond Brook Road. I have a hard time saying that one. Um so this is a this is where a crossing guard serves. It's right at the entry to the school. There's a a small bridge that goes over to the school over the Horn Brook Pond um on the kind of plan left side of your screen there. Um this one ties really well into the uh point that uh you were making John related to uh mixing. Um so this one, there's only a sidewalk currently on the s- uh south side of the bridge. So everyone is using that and it gets super crowded. And it's really challenging with the school moving to the other side and having the sidewalk on that south side. Um you're gonna have actually potentially increased mixing. So that's something that um I believe is in the the current plan as a potential option. And we are showing it as well, kind of tying into what the consultant for the the site is saying, that uh access for a pedestrian bridge potentially just north would uh provide a lot of relief for that mixing issue. Additionally, there is a crossing guard that um serves this intersection now. Um he sort of stands in the middle and has the stop signs and it seems like it could it feels like it could be a lot of work to stop everybody in all directions there. He's doing a great job um raising that intersection. Um you know, kids right now just kind of run across in all directions and kind of they call it the barn dance when they can run across the street in all directions. So having that be up you know a planner planner area that um everyone's kind of controlled and slowed vehicles in all directions, I think could have a lot of value. It also has that kind of gateway treatment um kind of right to the entry to the school. Uh going down so uh Royal Street towards Sylvester Ave. Um this is an idea to have a couple of raised crossings there. Um there are no curb uh curb ramps now. So you actually won't have to build any curb ramps. You could just tie into them and keep the crosswalks uh level with the sidewalks there. Uh we didn't do a fully raised intersection here. Um there's some driveways kind of right in the intersection that we didn't wanna mess with too much. That was the idea there. Again, um slowing speeds down kind of in the neighborhood near the school. Uh and I apologize that I couldn't get these all on one map. I I tried. Um so this is going kind of uh south on Sylvester Ave and Horn Pond Brook Road where they kind of come together. Again, a series of raised crossings. Um there's some gaps in the sidewalk on Middlesex Street that we're looking to fill there. Middlesex at Canal having a raised intersection or sorry, raised uh crossing there is something we thought about. We thought about having a raised intersection there. I think that's a really important uh location. Again, lots of kids crossing there, you know with conflicts with vehicles. Um on the I guess the the bottom of the page where the words existing driveway are kind of uh to the right of the seven, I should have labeled it. There's a there's like sort of a dirt driveway into some of the trails related to the cemetery. So you really can't do if you could do an ex- um a raised intersection there but you'd have to tie back in and put a bunch of fill. It'd be fairly expensive and arduous and could be messing with some right away there. Um so the thought there was to just raise the uh the crosswalk. Um the gaps in the sidewalks kind of continue down Middlesex Street. Um crossing Horn Brook Pond Road on the kind of uh the top side of the page on near the eight. Um the sidewalk just continues down towards the the path and doesn't go down Middlesex Street. So if kids are trying to continue down Middlesex Street, there's no crosswalk, no sidewalk there. So that's filling that gap as well. Um and then last but not least, uh moving down um Middlesex Street onto Lake Street, uh tying into the um adding some stop signs, crosswalks and tying into the uh the bridge project where they're widening the sidewalks. So continuing that widening um to connect over to you know the high school and kind of the tri-community path in that direction. Um continuing the sidewalk um in on Middlesex Street and some uh traffic calming, which I think is important given the uh there does appear to be through the counts, some um some cut through happening in the area. Generally cut through drivers are a little bit more aggressive.
Um sorry, question about that one?
Yep.
Um so Lake Street is wider than Pond.
Yep.
And we have the tri-community bikeway there that ends there. Is there any way to did you explore any bike facilities, bike lane or on Lake?
Um sorry.
In either direction?
So just um looking at the um the bridge project has a crosswalk going in. So that was one thing. We were looking to try to get an opportunity for crossing Lake Street. So that is gonna happen with that project. We are talking about widening the like a shared use path. Um I believe it they are proposing eight feet on the bridge project. So tying into that to have it come from the connection, you know, near the high school on Skilling Street, across Main Street, have it be wide enough to go all the way up to Linden where you have the you know the sh- uh you'd have sharrows kind of off street or excuse me on street um connecting to the path in that direction. So this is all related to the school. So the I would say we didn't look at bike lanes on Lake Street because it's not really kind of the purview of the project, but we're not impeding them either. Um I do have a little bit more. I said last but not least, but that's just the concepts that now this prioritization. So I can rattle through this fairly quickly. Uh we were looking to try to um prioritize these projects a little bit because I think it it you know is a lot. And I don't know if we're gonna be able to get to all of them or if they're you know all gonna have the same um ability to be done at the same time. Um so again, the intention here, the biggest goal was to fill those pedestrian network gaps, slow vehicles down and shorten crosswalks, picking those places that have the highest uh volume of of people crossing the street or riding their bike and um vehicles turning kind of over those spaces. So we've I've broken them into three or excuse me, four tiers, um which we can um I'm certainly happy to answer questions about. Um so tier one is uh those projects listed there. Um I can rattle them off, but it's four of them. Um total construction cost and then I've included um you know engineering design cost, uh you know getting survey, uh construction administration services, all that stuff, all the kind of soft costs, police detail, temporary traffic control. Um you're landing around one point two seven million um in work for tier one. That's the largest tier. Uh tier two would be Pond Street closest to the school. Um cause you get more crossings and more there's some pretty high volumes of turning over those crossings. Um looking at that, it's about four twelve, four hundred and twelve thousand. Tier three, um Pond Street a little further down and then that Middlesex Street at Horn Brook Pond, Horn Pond Brook Road. Um at uh seven forty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-five thousand. Um and tier four um is the remainder, which is the traffic calming on Middlesex Street. Um and then the work kind of along Lake Street. Um and that's about four, uh excuse me, five forty-seven. Um and again, these include a thirty percent contingency. We tried to kind of inflate these um to make sure that they're comfortable. Um depending on when you're gonna do them, you obviously get you know you can get a little bit more for your dollar if you do a bunch of them versus if you I didn't wanna break them down to just one project because those numbers get like they kind of seem they would seem a little crazy. And I don't think one would make sense. Um so I broke about it to four. Um we can kind of slice it a few different ways. Uh but that lands you at uh just under three million dollars and you know all in for construction, um engineering and uh temporary traffic control for for the projects that I listed out today. That's my final slide. Thanks.
Thank you Erica.
Questions? Comments? Um so the idea of this tonight was just presentation, all of us, just you know basic concepts. You know, obviously this is just the beginning of this uh work, but just to show you what they've been doing. Um Beth, what would you anticipate and Erica too? What would you anticipate being the next steps in this process?
Yeah, so um we are going to, as Erica said, they have a final report they're putting together. Um we're um hopefully gonna get on the T-TAC agenda for later this month and then have a couple public hearings, public public information sessions really with the neighborhood and the school community just to let them know what what Tool's been working on and to get some feedback um overall. Um I think we probably have to make some decisions before town meeting about the scope of what we think, whether it's we pick the projects or we pick a dollar number and we you know match the project to the dollar number. But we need to kind of make some decisions about how big um we wanna go with possible improvements as part of the Lynch project.
That makes sense.
Do we have a uh placeholder for an article for this in case that we cannot put it on the?
Yeah, so I don't know. Do you wanna talk about that now or you wanna?
Not a good segue. We'd yeah, go ahead.
So um there's a couple of different ways we're trying to work it out. Um the first is that it would be included with the Lynch Warren article itself, right? So the way the way it's written now, um bond council is comfortable that it we can include the tra- the traffic items. Um there's a little question about whether the MSBA will agree to that. So what we're recommending is that um the board this evening put a um direct staff. It's not in your packet, but direct staff to put a placeholder. And I can give you some draft language when we get to the Warren article. So that we have both options available to us, whether we need to do it as a separate standalone article or whether we can wrap it into the um the Lynch article. So that's our recommendation.
So yes.
That's where I was going with.
Long answer.
Well Erica, it seems like you know this is a good start. Obviously, um you know need to get community input, need to get T-TAC's input, um you know and just study the area more. I think Mariana asked some good questions specifically about biking. Um but you know I think you know we kind of have a short runway here if we're going to present you know to town meeting and potentially get something um in January on the on the election, overriding election. So if we can move that process forward expeditiously, um make sure everyone has a chance to weigh in on these. Um I see Ben here from T-TAC. You know certainly let's get that on the agenda and certainly get T-TAC's opinion um and get the neighbors' thoughts. Uh I mean as someone who's child went to school at Lynch for four years, uh I can talk about you know the the traffic nightmares that we've seen in those videos and stuff. So you know certainly that uh Royal Street, um Middlesex Ave, um Middlesex Street um area certainly in my own personal experience um is something that you know definitely needs to be you know looked at and approved. And certainly you know approved. And certainly, you know, approving the walkability from the other side, you know, Pond Street is a street that makes me cringe a lot. And those are big crosswalks for, for kids. And I think there's some blind corners there as well. So certainly anything we can do to improve that would be great. Hopefully, the, you know, EFPPC, you know, certainly welcomes this analysis, this work as well. You know, sees it, you know, that we're investing, you know, the town a lot of money in this area to build this, you know, brand new beautiful school. We're looking at significant costs to build this. So it certainly makes sense, you know, given the size and the scope of the project, to certainly address the surrounding neighborhoods. I think it's only fair to the neighborhoods around it as well and the people that will use it. So hopefully, we can work with EFPPC as well, you know, to, to get them to embrace this portion of the project. I think historically, it's been a little challenging when we do these projects. And I get it, you know, they have their, they're focused on the building projects and the building grounds. But certainly, you know, as we see downtown here in the center with the middle school and up at VO, you know, these projects can affect the neighborhood that people don't typically envision. So hopefully, everyone, you know, wants to collaborate and make, you know, these improvements happen for the neighbors. And, you know, the kids ultimately, they'll be walking and riding to school as well. So Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say too, it's, I know it seems like a big number when you look at it, but, you know, the project is, you know, almost going to be $100 million.
Right.
So this, in the context of that, you know, this is an extremely difficult site, you know, for, for us to do, you know, safe traffic planning. It's, and the enrollment of the, the facility that we're building is significantly more than it was before. I don't know if it's even 20% more, but I mean, there's a lot more, you know, kids that are going to be there, going there. So a lot more foot traffic, a lot more bikes, a lot more cars, so a lot more buses. And so it's, you know, a little, little bit more traffic than when John was running around the hallways there. Because it was built originally for junior high school, right?
That's right.
But, so thank you. I think, you know, there's always sticker shock when we see something like this. But I think what we've seen is our investments in the traffic improvements have been really, like, well-received and, and kept kids safer, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I agree with what Mike said, and I think the first project that we did this on was the McCall Phase Two, right? Where we added $500,000 for that. And as we saw, that wasn't enough, but it really kick-started a lot of the safety improvements, both in front and behind McCall there on Main Street and Mystic Valley Parkway. And, you know, to me, the most important thing is, you know, when kids are going to school is that they, they need to get to school safely, right? And so the, the curb bumpouts and the, the race crosswalks and everything else, I think, makes it so that kids can get to school safer. When, and when parents feel that their kids can walk to school, they will allow them to walk to school more often. It helps our traffic issues. It helps with reducing carbon emissions because we don't have as many cars on the street. So I, I mean, I think it helps with making it safer to get to school. The most important thing is that kids get there safer, but it, it helps with everything else that we're trying to do in town. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a big number, but the whole project is a big number, so.
I think in the grand scheme of things, it's, you know, I think proportionally to other projects we've done, it, it kind of, you know, is equal.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, it's a big project.
And I would just say as, you know, town engineer, that, that the things that she's recommending are longstanding concerns that we've heard from the neighborhood in terms of, you know, the speed and volume of traffic and just, and the access for kids to be able to get, and anybody really, for, you know, just kids who are walking on Pond Street, but people who want to get to, you know, the Horn Pond Reservation area, right? And they're crossing Pond Street there. So I think overall, like you said, it is a big number, but it does hit all the areas that we've seen and heard concerns from residents over the years. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Deib, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just real quick, I live on Canal Street. Deib Gerius, resident of Canal Street for at least 20 years or so. So Canal Street is, I was, I was interested that traffic calming was suggested for Middlesex, but not for Canal Street. Canal Street is a known cut-through to avoid both the light at Swanton and the light at Main and Lake. So there's an enormous amount of traffic which goes through there in the mornings, very fast. My neighbors with children are all upset at the speed of traffic on Canal Street. So I noticed that there was a bump out at Canal and Horn Pond Brook Road and whatever the third street down there is down there. But I'm wondering if there couldn't be some more traffic calming on Canal Street itself. People do tend to crank up their engines as they go down there. And there's a lot of kids who, Canal Street is a major thoroughfare for people coming from the other side of Main Street, who have to cross Main and then they come down Canal and then coming up from some of the sides. So just, you know, I don't know if you looked at Canal, but I know that's something that was on our radar, the community's radar for a while.
Canal is part of the study and I will, that link, I will listen to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deib. All right, let's bring up Nick, Charlie for the transfer station mattress waste ban. How are you, Nick?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thanks for being patient.
Coming to the board tonight, we are coming down to the end of a waste ban by Mass DEP. Mass DEP is waste banning whole mattresses and box springs at landfills and incineration facilities. The cost to recycle mattresses is more than we currently charge to dispose of them in the trash. So we were looking for the board to adjust the fee upwards. We've selected UTEC out of Lawrence for our recycling facility. It's $18 per mattress, $300 per haul. The hauling vehicle is a modified 20, 20-foot shipping container. We're putting forward two, two suggestions. $20 per mattress and box spring, which wouldn't necessarily cover the whole disposal and transportation, and $25 that would, in a well-packed, small mattress container, would.
So let me just ask you a question. So this, this ban goes into effect November 1st, so we need to do something. And the $20 fee, just so I understand it, if I come to the transfer station with a mattress and a box spring?
It's per.
What, per? So for both, for those two pieces?
Would be $40 or $50 on the.
Depending?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to be clear on that. So per piece is $20 essentially?
Yep.
Okay, no matter the size?
Twin or California king, same size.
Okay.
Or same price.
What if you pack as many California kings?
Correct. That's, that's, that's why our, we're, we're using our best estimate on, you know, what size mattresses we'll get in and how efficient our loads will go out.
Just wanted to just clarify that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are most resident bringing individual, you know, a mattress or a box spring? Or is it mostly commercial that are bringing?
I would say it's mostly residential. We did about 800 last year.
Not many, huh?
And at $10 apiece right now?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions?
Just one question, are, what happens to them when they leave here? Are they recycled? Are they?
So they're taken to UTEC in Lawrence where they're broken down for their raw materials, fabric, foam, metal, and wood. If anyone's interested in taking a tour, I can arrange that. I will advise you, it's gross.
Duly noted. Other questions? This seems to be reasonable. Oh, go ahead.
I'm just trying to, I actually think maybe you provided it, but thinking some quick math. Is there any idea of like if we do 20 versus we do 25, what would be the sort of deficit of?
20, 25 is a good break-even point. So 20 would be, you know, we would be losing $5 per mattress.
So potentially like $4,000?
Yeah, I was just going to do the math.
But people seem to be hardwired to push back on costs to get rid of things. That's why we, we wanted to put in that, that $20 option as well. Because if you show up with two mattresses and two box springs and I tell you it's $100, you might be upset. Will you still be upset at 80? Yes, but how upset will you be?
What are the options? Like what are, what are the costs somewhere else to dispose of?
They're all, there are some sites that are lower unit costs, but higher calling costs because they're further away. UTEC seemed to be right in that sweet spot of distance and unit.
Oh, I don't mean for us. I mean, like if somebody is going to dispose of one and they say, well, $25 is too much, I'm going to go throw it away somewhere else, that is.
There's the side of the road that DBW will pick up and it's free.
What is that?
There's very few mattress recycling firms out there right now. The DEP, I think, has kind of put the cart before the horse. But I fully anticipate that they will be issuing fines at the waste facility we go to.
And, and if you buy a replacement mattress, they typically charge you to haul the old one away?
Correct.
So this is still much cheaper than that service, you know, if people want to take advantage of it.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, it seems reasonable to me. I'm not sure what everyone else.
We do plan to come later in the year and do some minor scale fee adjustments on some other items as well. So this isn't the last of, you'll see of me.
Yep, no, this one, you know, obviously.
It's just the time sensitive with November 1st right around the corner.
Time is of the essence.
We need to notify our commercial customers as well and get some signage made up.
Sure. I think we should do 25, it's what breaks it in break-even, right? And I see somebody saying, well, if it was 40, I would put it here, but it's 50, I'm going to put it on the side of the road. Yeah, Mike's house, Mike's front lawn.
No, 25 makes sense. I agree with Mariano and, you know, it's with the market and the, you know, limited availability of, you know, recyclers for it. You know, I think costs are going to go up again, probably in the near future. So rather than make, having to make a, you know, big shocking jump from, you know, 20 to 30, you know, I think we start where our break-even cost is and not, you know, not have to come up with that money from some other service that.
Yeah, at, at my house, I live in Chelmsford, it's $40 curbside pickup to have a mattress picked up. Town-sponsored collection service, so.
Have we, you know, looked at curbside at all for, you know?
There's, we've missed that, that boat in this, this fiscal year, I'd say, just because there's so many towns out there and there's only so many trucks.
Yeah, right, right. Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't something we've explored, but come July 1st, if it's something the board's interested in me taking a look at, I'd be happy to look at it.
Yeah, it seems like with, even with the higher costs, the, you know, risk of that, you know, the mattress being disposed of somewhere else would, you know, be reduced. I think people would appreciate that.
Certainly also makes it easier for folks who don't have a pickup truck or.
Right.
To get their mattress.
Yeah, we see some crazy things at the transfer station with things tied to the roof and.
The only way to transport a mattress, right? Just to rope around it to this car and put it on the roof.
All right, so is everyone comfortable with 25? Is there a motion?
I move we adjust the fee for mattress disposable to $25 per piece. Is this beginning November 1st?
Effective.
Immediately?
You get to choose.
I mean, I would make it.
Let's give people some time.
October 15th? Does it have time to get signage and everything?
Chris just wants time to get his mattress in. Talking about here.
I'll be there tomorrow.
What day of the week is the 15th? Just to make sure it jives with.
It's a Saturday.
Do we want to shoot for Tuesday, the following Tuesday?
That's fine.
Following Tuesday.
18th.
So move we adjust the fee for mattress disposal to $25 per piece effective October 18th, 2022.
You want to say mattress and box spring?
Yes, so mattress and per, per mattress or per box spring to $25.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Thanks, Nick. Have a good night. Okay, next up, we have our ADU bylaw discussion. I have Deib from the Planning Board and the ADU Working Group here to come talk about what's gone on and where we're at. Say hello again.
Hello again. Hi, Deib Gerius, current chair of the Planning Board, also on the ADU Working Group. So I don't have any packets for you. Presumably you have a language for the bylaw.
Yes, so Deib, we have a draft from September 23rd, 2022. I, I assume, is this the most recent?
So I think we had a meeting on Friday and.
On a meeting on Friday, there were some edits.
Brian got us, Brian got Patty the version from after that.
Yep. So it was in our packet, so we've all presumably reviewed it.
It only goes up to nine, which is good. Not go up to 11. So briefly, there was, so the history. The ADU Working Group was something set up with the Planning Board, Housing Partnership Board, Council on Aging, Disability Access, Manchester Housing Authority. I think I got everyone. And we late, unfortunately, didn't invite the Select Board in until in the middle of the summer. But Michael is a Select Board's representative on that board. We were looking at introducing a zoning bylaw which would make it creating an accessory dwelling unit by right if it served the needs of two particular populations, which are persons with disabilities and people over the age of 62. The ADU Working Group had been working towards getting this forward, bringing this forward in spring of 2023. Michael came in independently and wanted to bring it forward this fall. With the recognition that if Michael wanted to bring it this fall, it would make sense for all parties to join together in order that we would hopefully be successful. The ADU Working Group worked with Michael on the language, which is, I think, very different from what, what this board saw in, I think, July. And the Planning Board voted last Friday to become the lead sponsors on this bylaw. Because historically, the Planning Board has been the champion of zoning bylaws. It's sort of in our purview. So what you see before you is language which is, in some ways, very close to the language that almost made it through the state legislature this past summer, which was held up only by one person. It went through its third reading, probably would have made it through on the floor, but one person held it up so that, since they had to start a whole new legislative session, that's another two years. So this bylaw is, has been very carefully crafted to look at these two populations. It is designed so that the person who is, whose needs are being met can be living either in the primary or the accessory unit. This is important, and it's also important to know that it allows rental of the unit, which is important for people with disabilities to access things like Section 8 housing vouchers, which would allow repayment of some of the funds used to build these. The price of an ADU, these are, you can go up to two bedrooms, but considering current housing costs and construction costs, we're looking at several hundred thousand dollars per ADU. These are not going to be, you know, cheap trailers thrown in. These are going to be real units. So the cost will be, be substantial. We want to make sure that the burden is low. We think that there's, there's certainly a need for it. We've heard many anecdotal stories of people doing this essentially already in terms of providing housing for in-laws, elderly parents, families who have children who are, who have disabilities but are approaching a period of time when they want to be independent but still live with their parents or with the family. So we know there's a need for this. We have put in safeguards in here to ensure that an owner must live on the property. So this is not going to be, you know, a, someone who buys a property in order to invest in it. No, the person who owns the property actually has to live on the land. They will have to be. They will have to be certified by the building department, by the zoning enforcement officer, as they will be, they'll have to meet all building codes because they're going to be have occupancy permits. There'll be annual certifications that they meet this, the reason for having an ADU. And I think those, that's the gist of it. Um, any other, any questions on this? I mean, we are looking for as broad support as possible. We already, the council on aging has already voted to, um, support this and to join in as a co-sponsor. Um, the housing partnership board is meeting next week. Winchester Housing Authority doesn't really have a role in terms of sponsorship, but they have discussed it and they brought their concerns with to our, through their representative Kathy Boyle to us last Friday. The language is, is, I think, has been agreed upon by everyone who's looked at it in terms of its efficacy and the fact that it is as narrowly um, worded as possible, and it works within our current zoning, which is also important.
Deab, town council reviewed this as well.
Town council did review it, yeah. And it's going back for a review, um, after we tweaked it on Friday. So there's.
And what was the Friday change?
Um, the Friday change had to deal with what happens to the property after the use is no longer permitted. There was a, there was text that was included, which would have been really onerous on the owner in terms of you, the the text was to, uh, remove the, um, improvements, which in case if you're if you're putting in, uh, ADU and you put in a kitchen and you have to tear out a hundred thousand dollars worth, so, um, that didn't seem like something that a homeowner would want to do, and it would actually reduce the, um, number of people who would go for it. So we we agreed that, um, instead, this would be an enforcement thing, that if you were not able to, if you you couldn't prove there's an annual, um, certification as well as upon sale of the unit, and that would be used to, um, essentially ensure that this wasn't abused after the, uh, after sale of the unit or after a person who is no longer eligible, is no longer in the unit.
Questions?
Yeah, a couple, a couple. Deab, Michael, this is great. Thank you for doing this. Um, Deab, you mentioned it's, you said sixty-two and disabled, but it's sixty-two and more disabled.
Or disabled, I'm sorry. Yes, it's or.
And is there a limitation on the number of occupants? Like, uh, in North Hampton, it's three.
There is a limitation on the number of bedrooms. It gets to be, there's, 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 depending upon, I'm not as good at this as Kathy Boyle is because she understands the people with disabilities and what their caretaking needs, but you wanted, you want at least two bedrooms in order to accommodate a person with a disability and perhaps a caretaker. I, we don't have a limitation on the number of people. It was felt that that wasn't really. When you look at what neighboring communities see in terms of the ADUs that are built, I don't, I mean, the statistics aren't great because, to be honest, a lot of, there aren't a lot of ADUs being built even after communities pass this. So, um, I don't think that's, we didn't think that was a concern. We thought limiting this, the number of bedrooms and the fact that it's, you have to limit the size of it to no more than nine hundred square feet. So that's a pretty small thing.
Other questions, comments?
Deab, I have a, just, I apologize for offering a line edit, but, um, I've noticed you're very intentional with, uh, using the language of people with disabilities and in, um, under the purpose on part two, it says disabled individuals, and then later down it uses individuals with disabilities. So just wanted to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we, that's, we wanted, yeah, we'll fix that.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is on, uh, number nine. What would the enforcement be for seizing the use that is out of compliance? Would that be? Who would enforce that?
Well, the 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 building department is the one who would certi, who's, who does the certification. They would have the right to inspect the property if you came in. So if you did not renew your certification, then we would essentially use the same kind of ad hoc enforcement that goes on anywhere else in town, and that if the neighbors see that there is people living in there, I mean, it would be, we wouldn't have someone coming out there and and.
Right, no, I I understand, but if the zoning enforcement officer says, okay, this is not, you know, there's two renters living in the two units instead of the, who enforces, I mean.
So, I mean, I don't want to jump in, but my my guess is if that's the case and they won't comply, it's like anything else we do with, so if they won't comply with the order, so they'll get a notice, they'll get, uh, of the of the violation. If they won't comply, then in theory, you know, you can go to court and get an injunction to.
Right, okay.
Force their compliance.
So it would be that way? There's no, like, penalty that is.
Oh, no, there is. The the there's, there's a fee for inspection certification and non-compliance set by select board. So.
Oh, for non-compliance, okay. I missed that. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I thought you were asking a different question.
So we could set a daily, the select board could set a daily fee on the owner if they don't comply.
And and even though you didn't ask this question, the reason why we put in a ninety day period is that if an owner sells the building and there is someone who is renting, who they need time to be able to find alternative living arrangements, and so that's why there's a ninety day. And typically, this would be, you know, it would be sale upon, uh, one of it, one of the realtors on our group had the right words. I don't have it, but that's what the ninety days is in there so that the person renting has the opportunity to get acceptable replacement housing.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
I'll just make one quick comment and thank Deab and Sally's here as well from the planning board for leading this charge. Uh, you know, it's, um, it's important. We heard at the, um, housing panel the other night as well, a lot of people asking, you know, what are what are we doing with this, right? Like, when is this happening here? You know, it needs needs to move forward. So, uh, I can't, uh, I I appreciate it coming in towards the end with the working group and and, um, working with everyone. It's, um, been an extremely hardworking working group, um, to be honest with you. A lot of, uh, you know, not a lot of talking, but a lot of working. So, um, so I appreciate that. And, there is a public hearing that the planning board will set as well for the community. Our goal, um, was really to get this out early enough to get a lot of stakeholder feedback and community feedback, you know, towards the end of September. So, um, I hope the board would support cosponsoring this, um, and also know that, um, the, um, what is put out at the, you know, public hearing, what is noticed, can also be changed and tweaked, um, before, um, it goes to town meeting. So, uh, if there are some errors over here, I mean, a lot of times it's like, oh, we didn't even think about that, and something comes in. So, so I I'm not sure when the hearing is is set, but.
I believe it's October fourth. Eleven? October.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. The the future is sometimes foggy to me. I know that we also, the the working group is also having a forum on the nineteenth,
and we're going to have it, we're, I don't know where we're having it yet. The idea would be hybrid. We would be in particular excited to have as many town meeting members show up so that they could learn about this prior to town meeting. Uh, we're gonna have a panel of, um, people from towns who have gone through this process, as well as people who understand the impact that this, the positive impact this can have on, uh, community residents. So, October nineteenth, uh, place to be announced.
Great. So, uh, Deab or Mike or anyone, what is, is there an action item for this board tonight?
I think the goal was that we would get as much co-sponsorship as possible. So, and the council on aging already met, it's on the, uh, agenda for the housing partnership board, the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm not sure who else, but, um, you know, and and maybe disability action. I'm not not sure, but, um, so that's, that's what I would recommend to the select board.
Yeah, I think we would, we would, certainly the endorsement would be obviously welcome, but actually being listed as a co-sponsor, I think, carries a lot more weight, and we are trying to get as many organizations to be on that sponsorship line.
Okay. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I I would be in favor of that.
Likewise.
So I guess we would entertain a motion then.
I I have another.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before, so related to your question, and I'm not a, an expert on the zoning bylaws, so maybe you can help with this, but there is a definition of family.
Correct.
And it says that it's any number of people that are related to one another, uh, plus no more than two additional persons can live in one unit, right? So would that, would does that address what you were asking?
There is. We have very carefully not used the word family in this language.
Yeah. No, but in each, okay.
Yeah, so so this is not limited to, um, the only word, the only place where family comes up in is description of the home, which is a zoning thing. But this is not restricted to, um, one of the things is that, um, for a person who's over the age of sixty-two, who wishes to age in place, as it were, and would prefer to live in a smaller unit but still attached to the main unit, and the only way they could do that or afford to do that is by renting the larger unit. Putting restriction on them being able to do that just to family reduces their ability. So we we very carefully did not use the word family.
I I agree. My concern is that the zoning bylaws still, you know, has in places that, you know, a single family unit can only be inhabited by a family, and there's a definition of what a family is.
That is a really good point.
Right, and so.
We'll have to look into that.
Do we need to amend those areas of the zoning bylaws, you know, with this?
The the zoning bylaws are are perhaps a little archaic on how it deals with families. Families have evolved a lot since most of these bylaws were written. So I will, I will look into that. That's, that's a really good point, so.
But but this wouldn't be a single family unit at this point with a need, once it hasn't accessory dwelling built on it, right?
Yes, yes. It could, you would build it on to, I mean, it's limited in size, no more than nine hundred square feet, no more than two bedrooms. So it's not really designed for a family. So I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding your question.
I I think, I don't know if it would be categorized as as just a single family residence at that point.
I just want to make sure that somebody goes through the zoning bylaws and that there isn't anything that would say, okay, in this law, it it's a, it's restricted to a family unit, which the zoning bylaw defines as.
Right.
Not more than two people that are not related, right?
Yeah, so let me, um, I will go and look at that.
Or have town council can go through it.
Council.
Yeah. Because I don't want to go through the, you know, through everything, getting this through town meeting and then having it be challenged by somebody who says, hey, the zoning bylaws says this about one family.
So the, as, um, the zoning bylaws are sometimes a big ball of mud that you have to take apart carefully. So, um, we'll have, if there is a a conflict with the purpose of what we want to do and the definition, we would have a family, we would have to be very careful in how we dealt with that to make sure that other parts of the bylaw don't all of a sudden fall apart. Because you tug in too many places and discover what a house of cards it could be. So, yes, but I will. I've made a note of that mentally because I don't have a pen.
All right. Any other discussion? I think if someone wants to make a motion, we can entertain it.
I move that the select board, um, have become a co-sponsor of the article from the planning board for accessory dwelling units.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, it's unanimous.
Thank you so very much. This is really exciting, man. Excited to see this move forward.
Thanks, Deab. Thanks for your help. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sally.
Okay. Next up, we've got our, uh, the warrant closes today. Uh, so we have our select board warrant articles. Uh, you can see a draft. Those in your packet. You know, obviously, we don't have numbers specifically at this point, um, or motions at this point, but just need to, you know, look at our articles. Um, I think Beth in her report had a list, and I think everything is on there, and except later, late this afternoon, we were given the opioid appropriations, uh, language. I don't know if you had a chance to see that as well.
I can tell, um, at the table here this evening.
Oh, is it?
Yes, I can.
Thanks, Patty. We're not voting on the, um, articles and motions tonight for the Lynch Elementary School at this point. We're just voting on our select board warrant articles at this point. We'll vote on those on a later date, uh, once we have all the information available. So any, um, we can just run through this if that's okay with everybody or? Yeah, okay. Uh, so we've got article one, obviously, which is the reports. Uh, the next article, um, is the, um, the money to, uh, fund, uh, the Highland Avenue Traffic Improvement Project.
So the transportation network receipts is the money we get every year from Uber and other, um, ride sharing programs. Um, it's a relatively small number every year, and we usually add it to another much bigger number for some.
Be on the consent agenda at that meeting.
The consent agenda, yes. Good way to describe it.
Okay. Uh, any questions on that one? Comments? No? Great. Um, the next article, um, is just a standard article that we have, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, the next article has to do with Arber Lane and that, the cost of that water pump, and we'll get more information. Or have we got all the information on that? I can't remember.
There'll be a dollar value.
There'll be a dollar value, right? Yeah, okay. We haven't got that yet. All right. So this is just to make the the pump over there permanent. Uh, any questions or concerns about that article?
Just to confirm so everywhere that we're reading a sum of money that will be replaced with a dollar value.
So in the motion.
In the motion, yeah.
The articles are general and the motion has the more detail in it.
All right.
On this, sorry, I do have a question on this one. This one be, uh, Water and Sewer Enterprise?
Correct.
The next one is to, uh, vote, and again, another standard article that we typically have, uh, to vote, uh, transfer from free cash.
This is the Eversource, um, field engineer services. So, um, we have per MOUs with Eversource, we're able to hire a consultant to serve as a field engineer, and we have those funds reimbursed, but we have to kind of upfront the cost for that, um, and then it's reimbursed.
Any questions on that one? Okay, uh, the final one on the first page is the, uh, Washington Swan Street, uh, LDA. That we're continuing to work on. Any questions on that? The first article on the second page, uh, has to do with the the Griffin Museum and allowing them to use, uh, their endowed funds to make improvements to the building. You had a presentation on that. Any questions on that? Uh, the next one's obviously standard, referring committees. Uh, and then the third one has to do with the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, uh, and appropriating, um, a sum of money, uh, to that fund. Again, we'll have a dollar figure, figure for the motion, but at this point, we're just approving the article.
So are they net savings by switching?
Yes.
Right, so the, um, talking to Stacy, the comptroller, what she's recommending is that we move the money that was left over from the FY twenty-two budget, um, into the stabilization fund, and we expect we'll have some additional savings at the end of FY twenty-three, um, that we'll be able to move in as well.
So do we also need to have transfer from free cash? Because did any of that flow into free cash? It's right here. We only have appropriate. So I don't know if we need to have or transfer from free cash as well.
Good catch. Any other questions on that one? And then the final article, uh, has to do with the opioid, uh, settlement funds that, um, have we received our first payment yet or not?
We have not. So, um, we just received an email late last week. They are, um, asking communities that their preference is to give communities, um, a lump sum payment for twenty-two through twenty-five. And so they're asking communities to basically opt into that. Um, so we just responded that we're interested in that. So we have not received, um, our payment yet.
That's a new wrinkle.
It is, yeah. I think it's, it's good. Yeah, if 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 all goes according to plan, we'll have about seventy-six thousand dollars that will have available to us, um, from those first three years.
For the first three years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Any questions on this?
So I think, um, we would be asking the board to vote, um, these articles in substantially the form presented here. There may be a few tweaks. form presented here, there may be a few tweaks, the one you just brought up, capital L, I noticed on the first page, so just as we, you know, go through in terms of finalizing the warrant, there may be a few tweaks, so.
And then we talked about during Lynch, that placeholder for traffic, so.
Right, so I don't know if you want to.
We'll vote this first and then go, you know, we'll go to that next. Any other discussion about these articles?
So when we say, for example, in the article, from available funds, that doesn't include free cash, you have to be more specific? I'm just asking, you know, that, that's, because I'm a car.
I don't know, I just.
Available funds, okay, that covers everything.
I just saw that in the one about the Eversource account, it says to transfer from free cash or other available funds and that one doesn't say free cash, so I don't know why, I don't know why one says free cash and the other one doesn't.
Might as well add it in.
Right, yeah.
And it doesn't hurt. We should be consistent, yeah.
Usually to me appropriate means appropriate from like an account that already exists, right? So, but.
If I was on the other side of that, I understand it, if I was in the audience, I'd be like, well, where's it coming from? It's available funds, what's the bucket? So I think it's better to.
Well, that would be in the motion, right? Which bucket it's appropriated from, but I don't know if the warrant needs to, yeah, that's.
I'll, I'll confirm.
Or we might as well just have it.
All right. Is there a, a motion?
I move that the select board warrant articles as proposed are added to the town meeting warrant for the fall 2022 town meeting.
So I would use the term substantially in the form presented in case, as I said, we have to make some tweaks to them.
I move that the select board warrant articles as proposed, subs, or, um, as substantially in the form proposed are added to the fall 2022 town meeting warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? It's unanimous. Great. So let's, let's just turn our attention to that Lynch.
Sure.
Place holder.
So as I mentioned, the, the warrant article that's drafted that you have a copy of does include transportation, so there's two, one is for the repurposing of a feasibility study many and the second is for the project itself. There's some questions that have been raised about whether the MSBA will allow that, so we're going to work with bond counsel and the MSB over the next week to clarify that, but in the meantime, the staff recommendation is that you place a standalone article on the fall town meeting warrant to appropriate funds for the design and construction of traffic improvements in the vicinity of the Lynch School, Lynch Elementary School, subject to a successful override vote appropriation shall be raised by borrowing our other available funds, so this would give us two options moving forward, one either to bundle it with the Lynch article or to have a standalone article and then if we don't need the second one, we can just have that indefinitely postponed.
Yeah, and it would also give us the option if we needed to, you know, if this passes, to put something on the override as well, as a, either in that question or a separate question.
Right, so the question, for the, for the ballot question, it can either be one number that has the, like the school work plus the traffic work or it could be two separate ballot questions.
I mean, we just.
Probably wouldn't you, it was like when they did the high school, you knew they had to do the field, but we just did the high school and we went back and said, hey, we started the high school, but we need, you know, twelve million dollars for the field next door because the basement keeps getting flooded. We need the, you know, if we're going to be transparent, we need the traffic improvements with the school.
Right, it's, some of it's just semantics with the MSBA, just to make sure that they don't have any concerns about the scope of what's being proposed.
But I bring, you realize that the net cost of the project is this, or the gross cost is this and it includes, I don't know if it's phase one, two, three, or four of the traffic, but it's the whole thing.
Yeah, I think when we did the VO project, we didn't kind of include that in the language and we had leftover money in the project, but we couldn't use it to do the traffic improvements, right? So then we had to, you know, wait to do a, you know, a safe route to school grant, which took, you know, almost ten years, you know, so it makes sense to, it's significant enough to, to bond it.
When we did McCall, we put it all in one question, but we didn't have the MSBA to deal with because phase two was not reimbursed by.
Yeah, so maybe a third time's a charm and we'll figure this one out. I mean, to John's point, I mean, this is, you know, as we, we heard, I mean, we've talked about it's, you know, you know, this, this size and scope of this project, you know, is going to have an effect on that neighborhood and, you know, it's a long time coming to make these improvements to, to the pedestrian and.
Walking to that school, it's a mess.
Yeah.
You know, coming down Ponce, it's just, it's gross, it's, it's, it's not pleasant.
And we're not asking the MSBA to reimburse any of the traffic, so hopefully if the MSBA is watching on Wincam, you know, they would realize that we're willing to pay and that kids need to safely get to that school that they're thankfully helping, partnering with us to help build and, but that, you know, we are willing to pay for all of the improvements to safety.
Well, and I think, you know, I'll, I'll make it even a little localer, that the EFPVC, you know, realizes this is an important aspect of the totality of this project, you know, to, you know, and it's, it's kind of our role, you know, dealing with the streets to, you know, to kind of emphasize that portion of this project, so. So, you know, well, this provides us just the ultimate pathway to do that, so if, if there's any further discussion, happy to entertain it, if not, we can just, you know, maybe vote that language.
I move that we direct staff to place a standalone article on the fall town meeting warrant to appropriate funds for the design and construction of traffic improvements in the vicinity of the Lynch Elementary School, subject to a successful override vote. Appropriation shall be raised by borrowing our other available funds.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Passes. Great. So I think that covers everything we need to do for town meeting warrant articles this evening, am I correct?
I think so.
Okay. So next up on the agenda is the firefighters MOU, which is, you know, great that we've been able to resolve this, so Beth, I'll let you talk about it.
So this is the second contract that has been settled, previously at springtime meeting we had the police superior officers. Do you want me to, how much detail do you want me to go through?
I mean, has everyone had a chance to review it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, any questions? I don't, it seemed pretty good. You want to say thank you for, I mean, it's been a tough one, a couple of these contracts have been tough and it's been a lot of, lot of time that staff has spent on it, so appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and the, the fire union was really great to work with, so appreciate their efforts as well.
Great. So hearing no questions or further discussion on this, if we could just vote to approve this MOU, and just so I understand the pathway forward on this, will this, does town meeting need to approve this?
Yes.
So will this be an article?
Yep.
Sponsored by?
By the personal board.
Personal board, great.
It's the last article of town meeting and Peter Chymitz stands up there and.
Yeah, I think he rallied to get it a little sooner, not always be the last one, yeah.
I move that the select board approve the MOU for the International Association of Firefighters Local fifteen sixty-four as presented on September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Great.
Better be almost done, I think it's losing her voice here, so.
Got enough for forty-five minutes. No, I.
Patty, do you want, logistically, do you want the board to sign this?
Yes, I have it.
Yeah, okay.
I have it, he's already decided.
Okay, great.
We have a consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda for Monday, September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Getting a race on Thanksgiving.
Yep, turkey trot, I will not be running that one. Get retired. We did have town manager search on the agenda, there's really not much to discuss, it's been posted and I think applications are due on the twelfth, twelfth, and we'll have more to talk about at our next meeting on the, next Monday.
Working group, is that one we're going to discuss the, or the?
Yeah, we'll discuss.
Screening, screening committee, not working group, yeah.
All right, that's all I got, anybody have anything else? I'll take a motion to. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Wincam, thanks everyone.